All right, Matt, thank you again. Thank you for your patience. I know we've tried a long time to get this thing scheduled. Schedules have been almost impossible and we proved it again today, so.
Yes. Well, and I am told that we are recording this, so please make sure that you relay to all of your compadres on the board here how amazing the presentation was because we do feel that the information is important. It might even be a little bit entertaining, and so we hope that you get something from this discussion. But basically, what we're about to do is give you kind of a crash course on what the county board needs to know about emergency management. I think you'll see a lot of it rests on the shoulders of the board chair based on the chief elected status. But we'll kind of walk you through some of what the law says that emergency management has to do, kind of where those components fit in in Kent County, and then we'll actually take you through the tornado event from August so you can kind of see how we applied everything. So, without further ado, I will also say that we knew we were coming after one of your board meetings today, so there is a lot of like multimedia involved in the presentation. We tried to do as much with like flashiness and videos and this type of thing. When we reached out to the fire department, they would not allow us to bring pyrotechnics in, so you'll have to forgive us for that, but...
Sorry.
You know what? I think we do a lot of exercises, so I'm sure we could work that in, so.
And I could have overridden that if you really wanted.
If we haven't met, my name is Matt Groger. I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator. You'll learn a little bit more later on in the presentation about what role my position plays within the Emergency Management Act in the state. Also with us in the back of the row here is Scott Corbin. He's our Deputy Emergency Manager. Sitting next to him is Mr. Alex Yarid. He is our Emergency Preparedness Program Specialist, which really means he's our planner. Many of you know the LPGA is here in town this week. Alex was busy for the last couple of weeks working with their planners to make sure that the public safety end of things was all tied up and set and ready to go. And then also, our special guest with us here today is Lieutenant Orville Thiker from the Michigan State Police Emergency Management and Homeland Security Division. Lieutenant Thiker's position is, in terms of what we deal with here at the county, he often serves as a conduit from us here in local government up to the State Emergency Operations Center and ultimately the governor as it comes to crisis response and recovery. So, thank you for being here today. What we're going to do is we're going to look at emergency management through the lens that we had to back in August for this tornado. So, you can see this is images that are probably familiar to you from some of the damage that we had. Leading up to the storm, we had some of the hottest and most humid conditions that we've experienced in several decades. In fact, the dew point readings on August 24th were near 80 degrees, which was the highest we had seen in 60 years locally. Thunderstorms began the evening of August 24th mostly to the north and west of Kent County and gradually made their way into the county. I'll try to explain a little bit of what you're looking at here. This is four different versions of the same radar image being shown on this screen. When you see the two black vertical lines, those are the county boundaries for Kent County. That box of highways that you see right there in the middle, most of you are probably familiar, that's the downtown metro area, so 131, I-96, 196, M6. And basically, what you're seeing in the video imagery here is what the storm looked like on radar as it came through. One thing that I'm going to highlight or try to is what the meteorologists always refer to as the debris ball. So, we'll wait for this to start over again. I'm going to be in the lower left-hand corner as we watch the storm start coming through Ottawa County right here, just coming into Kent now. And then if you watch right in this area, right there is a debris ball. So, we knew the night of as we were watching the radar as this was coming through that we did indeed have a tornado that was lifting debris into the air, and we started taking actions based on that. In terms of public alert and warning, that's one of the functions within emergency management that we have some level of responsibility for. The Weather Service also, in terms of weather-related incidents, has primary responsibility for that. You can see the first warning came out at 7:40 PM that night, and that was a severe thunderstorm warning. It was primarily for like the southern Newago County area and then northern Kent County. That was followed up by a severe thunderstorm warning at 8:07 PM that extended deeper into central Kent County. And then at the bottom of this page here, you see that they added a tornado possible flag. They started seeing the rotation on the radar. They have to wait for two turns of the radar, and those things take about two to three minutes to make a full revolution. And they really like to see the rotation on radar for at least two scans before they issue their tornado warnings. And so, there is some delay built into that, but the minute that they see that tight rotation on radar, they want to get some type of warning out to the public. So, that's what they did at 8:13 PM. They updated the severe thunderstorm warning to have a tornado possible flag. And then ultimately, at 8:22 PM was when the tornado warning was actually issued by the Weather Service. At that point, the tornado had been on the ground. We later found out for several minutes, started in the southwestern Alpine Township area and ultimately ended up at the Sheriff's Equestrian Center on Crowes in Plainfield Township before it lifted off. It actually took a tree down just north of that property on Crowes. This is what our cell phones did. If you were within that red box at the time that the tornado warning was issued, this is something that the Weather Service combines with their warning. So, when they issue a tornado warning or a severe thunderstorm warning, they have a destructive flag. So, if it's going to have 80 mile per hour winds or higher, they'll also issue one of these IPaaS or Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. That makes your cellphone go off. It makes the weather radio go off. It also can come across as a ticker on the TV. All three of those methods are shown right here on this slide, and all three of those operated the way that they were intended to. Siren activation also occurred that night. The Kent County Dispatch Center began the process of activating all 120-some of the tornado sirens that we have within the county. They all activate at the exact same time when they push the big red button. We've had plenty of instances in the past where we've had a tornado cut through Freeport in the very southeastern corner of the county, and people in Kent City have blue sky overhead and there's tornado sirens going over. You know, they're trying to figure out what's going on. So, dispatch started that process, but it does take a couple minutes to get that system working with some of the older technology that's being used. We are looking at what we can do to improve that and trying to work through some proposals on how we can maybe collectively with the units because the county doesn't own any of the sirens. The local units do, and so there's some effort underway right now to try to understand what a equitable model to fix that.
Kent County 911.
These are actual 911 calls that occurred that night.
I think a tornado passed by my mom's house.
Did you speak with her?
Yes, and the light cut off. She's okay, but I don't know about my dad.
Hi. I was hit by the tornado. It was in the Comstock Park. It hit my house.
Okay. Is anybody hurt?
No. Everybody is safe.
Okay.
I dropped a gun and didn't know. We're a ground deal. I wanted to strike itself.
911.
Our house has been hit by lightning and we smell smoke.
Okay.
I can smell something burning. It's plastic or something.
Your Kent County 911 Center experienced the highest level of recorded call volume ever the night of August 24th. It was 257 calls for service that were simultaneously in the computer-aided dispatch at that time. The previous record, as you can see there, was 171 prior to that. So, definitely a very impactful situation. You can see the city of Grand Rapids is that orange color below there. They were also quite busy during that time, but maybe not to the extent that we were with the tornado damage that was going on in Comstock. Another look at 911 calls. All the blue dots that you see on this map are the actual locations of where those 911 calls were generated from. This information, believe it or not, is fairly readily available now with the technology that we have within the public safety realm. So, we were actually looking at this slide when we opened the Emergency Operations Center only an hour or so after the tornado warning was first issued, which is very helpful for us as we're trying to assess where do we have, you know, people calling in calls for service, who might need help, are there any densely populated areas there where we might have some type of structural concern, maybe need urban search and rescue and that type of thing. This is another great tool. Most of you are familiar with this. This is the Consumers Energy outage map. Also gives us a pretty good idea on where we're seeing damage, but also, we look at this in emergency management for the long haul. So, you'll see a slide later on where we actually combine this information with our functional and access needs individuals that we know about through programs like Meals on Wheels and that type of thing. If they're without power for more than a few days, we have a way of comparing that data and then doing some check well-being calls to make sure everybody's okay. Another look at how much power was out at that time. At about 17% within Kent County that were without power. There was one minor injury that was attributed to the tornado itself, and that was in Plainfield Township where a, I think he was 23-years-old. He was in between the storm door and the main door of his house right as the tornado was passing down his street. At first, the air pressure kind of sucked the big door into his leg and smashed his leg against the door jamb. And then the winds changed quickly right after that, and it broke the glass storm door. And so, he had the glass shards that were then cutting him on his lower torso as it was going back and forth with the winds. But he was okay a couple days later when we finally had a chance to talk to him. And there was also a crash up in Spencer Township at that time that may have had something to do with the rain that was in that area, but they did not see the type of wind damage that we saw in Comstock and areas south and east of. The night of August 24th, this is what we knew that we had. These were the calls that were going out. We knew that we had some structures that were destroyed, kind of get an idea on some of the areas that we knew that we had some significant damage. So, immediately, we kicked into damage assessment mode and tried to figure that out. This picture was taken about 15 minutes after we stood up our Emergency Operations Center at the Sheriff's Office. We were thankful that our volunteer emergency services team had a meeting in that room that night as the tornado warning was issued. So, they stayed put. They helped us kind of throw tables around, get phones hooked up, and get ready to operate as the EOC. And then these were our objectives. One of the things that you'll notice when we talk later on in this presentation is that emergency management is very much about processes, and we always want to know the compass heading that we're going down, make sure that we are using resources in the most efficient way possible. And so, this was kind of our ranking of the initial objectives the night of August 24th. Some of these things you're going to see later on, the debris management thing obviously became much more of a priority later on. You all remember all the constituent phone calls and emails about all the debris that people had that they were concerned about getting some help to get picked up. Damage assessment was a very labor-intensive part of this. You'll see some of that here in a minute as well. In terms of communications, the first thing that I say when we talk about the tornado and communications, people always remember that their cell phones experienced kind of a slowdown where they had trouble making phone calls. Data was slow. This is very common during, you know, emergencies and disasters. The cellphone towers themselves may have sustained some damage, and when you turn one of those antennas, sometimes it affects the other antennas that are out there. And so, the cellphone network was having a lot of issues that night to recover from. You can see kind of the left-hand side on this screen. These are the internal communications channels that we were using. On the right-hand side, this is how we were trying to communicate with the public. One of the most important things that we were doing in the Emergency Operations Center was to try to get a handle on the scope of what had just happened. How much help do we need? What type of help do we need? Who is still trapped? Do we need people, you know, to come in from out of the county to try to help, you know, lift walls off of people and this type of thing? So, we utilize the Sheriff's Office drone program. We're fortunate enough now to have, I believe, one drone pilot and equipment on shift pretty much around the clock now. So, that was one of the first tools that we called upon, and we sent the drone out there. But as you can see, the lights were off, right? This was probably taken around 10 o'clock at night. So, the sun was out of the picture, and the power was out in the area, and so, we had to use the FLIR capabilities of the drone to be able to see really anything, and it was not the best intelligence. The next morning, we had the drone go back out, and this is what it looked like as we flew from one neighborhood to the next. Keep in mind with drones, it's kind of a hopscotch where you put the drone up. The pilot has to see the drone, so you're limited in the amount of area that you can cover by that drone, but it does give you a lot better information than just walking along street to street. So, we had that. The next thing that we did was we did some of the walking in the neighborhoods. Here's a picture of Lieutenant Thiker and myself down in the lower right-hand corner as we were surveying the damage to the trailer park. And by the way, in that drone video a moment ago, I bet you didn't think that the damage was as bad as you see in that left picture, but that was actually reflected both in the video that you just saw and in this picture. So, the point here being damage assessment is a big labor-intensive process. It takes being on foot as well as some aerial assets to quickly kind of scan ahead and figure out where your damage is, and then go walk the neighborhood to make sure that you understand the extent. This is a little bit deeper into Plainfield Township. Picture at the top there is the end of English Avenue right where it meets 131, and that entire cul-de-sac area was pretty devastated. The house on the lower right-hand corner is on Sandtrap Drive in Plainfield, and that's the one where the TV crews were parked out in front of. And incidentally, that minor injury I talked about occurred in that lower left-hand home over there. So, the next thing that we did was we requested the MSP helicopter to fly, and the reason for doing so, I mentioned a moment ago, the drones are great. You know, if you've got them, you can immediately deploy them, but it's, you know, you're jumping from one place to the next. The helicopter has the option of basically flying the entire route all within a relatively short amount of time and then handing you a thumb drive when they are able to land, and then you can go back and start analyzing that a lot quicker. We're going to take a look at a little bit of that footage. We've cleared out a bunch of the fluff, so you're looking at just the best-of reel here, but this is the AT&amp;T building on Alpine Avenue. We've got a pretty good idea on the damage that was sustained there. I'm going to scan through these for the sake of time here. This is that backyard fun zone across the street from the AT&amp;T building on Alpine. Here's our trailer park again. One of the nice things about the helicopters is that you can do a fair amount of zooming in. So, the pilots were up there trying to identify what they thought was the hardest-hit area, and they would try to zoom into that. So, we had a little bit better intel at that point. There again is the trailer that we had in the other picture. See that red pickup truck that's underneath the tree? That pickup truck was purchased the day prior to the tornado, and unfortunately, the person did not have insurance.
Oh, no.
This is a little bit of Alpine Township. You can get evidence here, the tornado kind of dropping and lifting, dropping and lifting. Some houses were completely spared. Others had trees across the house or maybe the swimming pool. And this leads right up to Division, which leads into Plainfield Township. Alpine and Plainfield Townships saw our faces quite a bit throughout this event. If you have any, you know, interest in feedback, I would encourage you to seek it directly from them. We were fairly intensively working side by side with those two townships throughout this event. This is a little bit deeper into Plainfield Township. This neighborhood was the one where the lieutenant and I made the final decision that Kent County probably should declare a local state of emergency. When we went through this neighborhood, in some places, we already had debris that the neighbors had carried up to the street that were taller than I was for about 100 to 200 feet along the street. So, just a tremendous amount of tree damage and a fair amount of structural damage in this area. This is one of the adjoining streets in that same neighborhood. From here, the tornado crossed, I believe it is 7-mile here, and then actually went right over the top of Pine Island Elementary. And I believe we see that here in this video in just a second. You can see there's a outbuilding that was completely destroyed. Lawn mowers are still there. While we were in the EOC analyzing this information, I'm kind of waiting for the school to pop up in here. I can't remember if it's this slide or the next, but we actually saw, here it is right here, we saw this damage to the roof of the school, realizing that from the ground, you probably didn't know that there was roof damage there. So, we were able to get in touch with the school superintendent and eventually the principal for them to go and take a look at their roof, make sure that that was being addressed before the rain continued. This was the neighborhood, Scott View Sandtrap, that sustained probably the most structural damage. This is where most of the TV crews were parked out throughout the weeks and months to follow. This is that house that we mentioned on that prior slide that lost its roof decking. And again, the blue one in the upper center is the one with the injury, I believe, that we had. Lots of work crews that were in the area already offering assistance. Slider window, I believe, in some places that were pulled out. This is the golf course. I want to say maybe English Hills over there by English Avenue. Scott, sorry, Scott Lake. Scott Lake, thank you. Here's English Avenue and that cul-de-sac that we referenced. And again, some homes miraculously were completely spared, but I'm guessing they bought that property probably in part for the nice wooded lot that they had behind them, and that's going to take a while to be restored. And then finally, the damage that we saw over on Pixley. So, again, this tornado, as most do, was lifting and dropping, lifting and dropping as it was going through. It happened to drop right back down right off of Belmont Avenue at Pixley. It's a garage that is smashed to the ground over there in the upper left. A roof that sustained quite a bit of damage in the upper right. And lots and lots of trees. All right. This slide summarizes the timeline and where the damage and the type of damage where it occurred. You can see where the tornado damage was. It was exclusively in Alpine and Plainfield Townships. All the rest of the damage that we had that night were straight-lined in nature, and as we went through and analyzed the MSP helicopter footage, it was pretty clear to us that that is exactly what happened. We saw it on the radar. We then switched to the video. It was pretty clear that it was more of a straight down and out in the area that was not tornado, and then tornado in that Comstock Park up through Belmont. By the numbers, what you're looking at here is the private dollar values. You'll see the public side here in a moment, but it was 4.5 roughly million dollars' worth of privately-owned homes, businesses that sustained damage. Get an idea on the number of structures that were impacted. This was not necessarily our final, but it was one of the iterations of numbers that we submitted to the state. And then this is the way that that information looked. So, again, this is that private damage again, but this is using the state's system, the Michigan Critical Incident Management System. So, one of the ways that we here at the local county level represent information up to the state level is through that web-based system. So, that night, Scott was pounding keys pretty hard in the back row back there to get this information into the state so they had an idea on where Kent County fit in to the nine counties total throughout Michigan that experienced either tornado or flooding damage that night. This is the public side. Again, these are the numbers that we submitted up, but keep in mind, this includes everything from debris removal, if there was any publicly-funded property that sustained damage, and we did have a little bit of that in Alpine, that gets reflected here, and then any of the emergency protective measures. So, any volunteer fire departments that had to respond out there, or any public safety personnel that we had to call in on overtime to help us cover, those numbers get reflected here as well. One of the nice partnerships that we have in the state of Michigan is through the, both the Center for Shared Solutions at the state of Michigan and Emergency Management Homeland Security Division. They have created the ability for people to utilize this QR code. It's county-specific, and anytime that we have an incident within our county, that we want people to report, self-report to us using their devices. They can give us an idea on how much damage they sustained. They can actually take and send pictures of the damage directly to us. And then we take this information and hand it off to our friends in the Equalization Department. You'll see them actively involved here in the damage assessment part, but it's basically one of those good government collaborations that we have, and that is a tool that we use frequently. One of the things that we were doing in the EOC is trying to coordinate between different groups. Consumers Energy reached out to us, and they wanted to make sure that we connected with our local superintendents to advise them, "Don't make a decision on closing school on Monday based on power outages. Consumers thinks that they're going to be able to restore power to all but maybe one or two schools." So, if you're thinking about closing, reach out to Consumers. Let's have that discussion directly. So, we were able to be the conduit to begin that discussion with them. And then 211, I honestly cannot say enough good things about 211 in our community. We use 211 in a time of crisis to help us keep a finger on the pulse of the community. We want to know what types of services are being requested by the community so that we can find out if there's anything that we can do to either expedite or add to the resources that are needed to make that happen. One of the key things that they did for us this time around, though, was that they utilized this crisis cleanup program to be able to allow residents in the affected communities to say, "Hey, I need help with stuff that maybe my insurance doesn't cover. Maybe FEMA won't cover, but I got all these trees all over the place. Do you have anybody that might be available to help me cut those up and process through them?" So, 211 was able to take those types of calls for service, enter them directly into the software program. Here's what it looked like. And then, the volunteer organizations that do that type of work also log directly into that same program, pick up and claim a call for service that's already been entered, and then head out there to go do the work. And so, we had a relatively efficient use of technology to get the volunteers to where they needed to be. This is something that I mentioned earlier. This is actually a view of what it looks like when we combine the power outage layer with those individuals within our community that we know, you know, need some extra assistance. Either they're homebound, maybe they're part of the Meals on Wheels program, maybe Community Action, you know, knows that they need a little additional assistance. We can relate this information so if they've been without power for two, three, maybe four days, and they're on that list of needing some extra help, we can either assign somebody to go out and check on them or hopefully give them a call. Cooling centers were key. Our Kent District Library branches were a tremendous partner for us during this event. As you remember, one of the reasons we had those storms was because of how hot and humid it was leading up to it, and that humidity and heat continued during the recovery process. So, the library system was able to help us out by acting as a cooling center. Quick look at the resources that were deployed. Bet you didn't think we'd have Southern Baptist Convention Disaster Relief active here in Kent County, but we absolutely did. They do have a Michigan chapter, and they were phenomenal at what they do. Volunteer organizations active in disaster, VOAD was the term that we used with you when we were walking through the declaration of emergency process. And so, that gives you a little bit of an idea. They help with felling and bunking of trees, which basically gets them down into manageable parts, and then the homeowner is basically responsible to kind of process them from that point forward. We also set up a volunteer reception center when we knew that we had these volunteer groups that were coming into the community. We had to basically put a system around them and help them manage. And so, here's a look at the Plainfield Township boardroom being utilized as a volunteer reception center. The map in the upper center of the screen is one that our search and rescue team uses. And what's nice about it on a search is as the searchers are walking across the map, it's painting a picture on... it's painting a picture on where they've been, so we don't go back and search the same place twice, right? So we were able to utilize that same system for where our teams had been out, so we knew that we covered the entire neighborhood, and in this case, this is the Westgate neighborhood in Alpine. But then also, they could drop a pin for every house that raised their hand and said, yeah, I'd like some volunteer help out here. So that's how we process that. With the assistance of Vice Chair Green, we were able to get those volunteer organizations a place to sleep at night while they were here. This is the Salvation Army Pine Island Camp, and you can see we were touring with Team Rubicon and Southern Baptist Convention to see whether or not they'd be able to utilize this facility, which they ended up doing. Plainfield ended up paying the Salvation Army back for some of the costs that were associated with that, and then submitting for reimbursement through FEMA later on. But this is a tremendous facility, and it was very important to have the support that we had to make all the connections necessary to get these folks a place to sleep. Media was obviously very interested in what it is that we were doing. There's a lot of concerns from neighbors, we'll get into some of those here in a minute, but just a lot of interest in what was happening with the disaster response and recovery. And this leads to the expectations that we had within the community. Many in our community believed that government would swoop right in and take care of everything that happened, and there are some laws in place that don't necessarily allow for that. You know, Road Commission is a good example. If it's within, what is it, 33 and a half feet, I think it is, from the double yellow line, they'll help with it, and if it's not, sorry. It's a homeowner responsibility, and so there was a lot of emphasis in making sure that good government was responding even when the expectations were maybe different, you know, than what the public, you know, was hoping for. So you can see some of the information there on the right-of-way concerns, even up to and including concerns with the Drain Commission. We were very involved with the Drain Commission, trying to understand if this debris was going to cause future flooding and what we could do to prevent that from a government perspective or if it was a homeowner responsibility. More financial reimbursement information, again, a lot of that disaster damage assessment that we do is to line us up for potential reimbursement. If we have costs that we can get covered later on because of the declaration process that we go through, that is a big part of the damage assessment. So we were working to make sure that we had a process in place that was going to get those communities that were hardest hit over the threshold, so to speak, so that they would become, we basically wanted to make sure if they were reimbursable in any way that we didn't do anything to negatively impact that. We wanted to give them the best chance for getting some of those funds back. And then at the bottom is kind of a crash course on what some of the financial reimbursement possibilities are. Basically, to become eligible for state funding, you have to first try for the federal funding piece. And so there's definitely rules for each of the four buckets that you see down at the bottom. We got way more into detail than I ever hoped to get on each of those, but we ended up with the potential for Section 19 funding, and I think those transactions are occurring right now. Alpine and Plainfield, City of Grand Rapids, all met the threshold limits, and so they're probably going to see some reimbursements based on that. And that's on the public. No, I'm sorry, that's on the individual side, right? So individual, this was public, okay, public, sorry. You can see there's plenty of detail to that. This is a look at when the feds came out to actually do the damage assessment with us. So we had already done probably three different iterations of damage assessment. You saw each of those, drones, the helicopter, you know, beaten feet on the ground to get through the neighborhoods. This is when the feds actually come out to validate that. So, as you can see in the lower left-hand corner, your brand-new equalization director, she had been with us, I think, for like a week. We put her in blue jeans and sent her out with FEMA to go walk the streets in Plainfield and Alpine to validate the dollar amount of the damage that was seen. So, very involved in the damage assessment. You can see all the parties that we had at the table for that. All right, this leads us now into the process. So what you saw was the incident, we've talked about that. Now here's the process, and hopefully this will make more sense to you than if we were to just start here and kind of build from there. Emergency management focuses on making sure that we have a solid process for handling things. So command and control is very important. We all know that there are strong personalities in the world, but we need to have a solid way of handling the right jurisdiction, having the right level of say in how things are going to happen. ICS brings that into planning. It also helps us make sure we don't miss things like the finance and admin part. We want to be reimbursed if we can be. So we build that into our process. This is the Emergency Operations Center. We're not a command center. We do not call the shots. We determine how we are going to take limited resources and share them appropriately with those who definitely need them out in the field. That is the primary role of an emergency operations center. Command is still command out in the field, and that's usually either fire, police, EMS, whoever has the primary incident responsibility at that time. So, we do manage and disseminate information as well, so we were definitely working with county administration communications team as well as the Sheriff's Office Communications Team, make sure that we had information going out. Health Department was a huge partner as well, and then some of the local units. Am I allowed on an information center to allow a commissioner to ask a question, or does that have to go through a formal process? We have our hand raised.
They have to petition me.
Cash in favor.
Go ahead.
Yep.
I was just curious, this command center is really important. I'm just wondering about your electricity, that's probably a really important spot as well. Are you keeping yourself away from the damage? What type of maintenance?
So, yeah, so our primary emergency operations center is on the third floor at the Sheriff's Office. We have two railcar-sized generators that back up the entire facility to include the jail. So even if we lost the primary generator, there is a backup and transfer switch that we could connect. And we experienced some of that when we dropped a crane, as you'll probably remember, on our facilities management a while back.
You dropped it?
I, okay, I should, I'm talking to attorneys, I gotta be careful. All right. So, this is, you know, part of the state presentation that they use throughout the state of Michigan to orient boards and commissions as to the roles and responsibilities of emergency management. I think most of you know who I am, and I think your partners looking around, I think I've got a name-and-face relationship with most everybody here on the board, but if you feel like you don't have that, or if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. It's critical that we have those relationships before the emergency happens, and oh, by the way, guess what's in the forecast for later this afternoon and tonight? Possibility of more tornadoes. So, it does matter, we want to make sure that we are helping you help your constituents. One of the things I want to also focus on here is the unique relationship of emergency management within county government. As I told you before, Public Act 390 of 1976 is the Emergency Management Act within the state of Michigan, and that basically says that the chief elected official, or Chair Steck, has the ultimate responsibility for how disaster response and even preparation goes within the county. In a well-organized county like we have here, that sometimes gets delegated down to an emergency management coordinator, and then to my program and the people you see in the back row. So, locally here, he is still responsible, and I get to operate most of the time as long as I do so at his will. So we stay in touch. So the responsibility comes to the chief elected through usually county administration team, then down to emergency management. However, our offices are at the Sheriff's Office, and so we are managed from an employment relationship basically through the Sheriff's Office that does afford us a lot of availability of the resources that we normally use during emergency response, but it also helps that oversight as well, so we can make sure that we're kind of, you know, working together with a well-run organization, you know, department within the county, but then also have that relationship. So I have a two-headed snake for a boss. I've got the sheriff, and I've got usually the administrator by way of delegation from the board chair. So just so you understand that distinction, it's a little unique to have that relationship. So a lot of our initiatives that we have for the community would come through county administration. Any questions on that? All right, lightning round, go ahead.
We are recording it, so it'd be helpful.
Thank you, this is great, a comprehensive report, and thank God this was actually not a huge, you know, this is a smaller tornado.
My sentiment, exactly.
Great opportunity to learn. You know, it's great that you guys are there for emergency assistance after the fact, and I know preemptive measures can take place. And one of the things that I came across during that whole situation, I had two huge ash trees that fell as I was driving down the road, and there's ash trees everywhere, and they're in right-of-ways, and they're like ticking time bombs, because they're all dead, and it's just a matter of time before they come down. I'm wondering, in that situation, is there, are they aware of that problem with ash trees? They grow predominantly up and down these right-of-ways, and they're up there, they'll stand for a long time until something comes along and pushes them down. That would be question number one. And the other point was, the use of drones is so invaluable. Oh my gosh, I can't believe there's people that are opposed to government having drones, but you can see from this footage how great. Do you have any type of heat-seeking feature on those drones where you can actually locate human beings based on body temperature and so on and so forth? And who owns the drones?
I'm a little outside my scope on both questions. What I will say on the tree question, again, the Road Commission has, you know, I think a fair amount of knowledge on tree maintenance, because they're out there every day doing it. And so I can't speak to the exact type of tree that, you know, that they may be aware of, but again, it's going to be limited. Homeowners have the responsibility, or, you know, business owners have the responsibility if it happens outside of the right-of-way. It's just the way it is. And then on the flip side, I do believe that there is some type of thermal capability. I can't really speak to the details of it, but I know that we've had the ability to, you know, see a person hiding behind a bush, for example.
Yeah, I was thinking, you could use it for this application and so many other.
And we intended to. If we were able to see inside of some of those trailers that were cut in half by the trees to see if there were people still in there but motionless, that would have directed crews right into that area.
I know they're really expensive, the thermal imaging run, but it seems like they'd be worth their weight in gold if we had a couple at your disposal. Thank you, Chair.
All right, lightning round for the roles and responsibilities part. We're going to start with local, so all incidents start and end at the local level. When local resources are overwhelmed, then and only then can state assistance be requested. I'll take that a step further. We have 15 communities here in Kent County that have more than 10,000 in their population. They are actually required by that same Emergency Management Act to have their own ability to handle a localized emergency all on their own. I cannot step into the city of Walker and say, here's what we're going to do, without them first saying, we need your help. We have expended our resources, we need the county to come in and help. So, just so you're aware, there is that same relationship then at the county level. The county has to not have a helicopter before it requests the state's helicopter, right? So we have to expend all local resources before it moves up. All right, local governments typically have the legal jurisdiction, that's one of the reasons why incidents start and end locally. And again, it's their employees, right, that are responding to it initially. Local government's most familiar with the communities. You know, I think there are sensitivities that you may have in certain areas based on certain things, and the better that you know your communities, it's one of the reasons why we try to utilize commissioners when we are involved in some of the work that we do. We may not know that there is a pocket of people that need, you know, maybe a different language offering or something along those lines in a particular area. Chief Executive Official, we mentioned this a little bit before, in your case, as a county, it is Chair Steck. So day-to-day responsibilities, from a oversight perspective, needs to make sure and direct development of community emergency plans, policies, and procedures, understand disaster protocols and systems, participate in training, exercises, and meetings, and identify potential issues. So here locally in Kent County, the way that we are doing that is, the chair has delegated most of that responsibility to the county administrator, who then does so to me. I recently brought on a couple of additional positions into our program. We have a deputy emergency manager, now Scott, so we've got some depth on the bench for response and recovery. We've got Alex working on the planning piece, and we now have Brian Staltenberg added to our team as well for training and exercise coordinator.
If I could explain that further, we had cut back emergency management as far back as the Great Recession, and so we're trying each year to add back one to get them back up to about five. I think we're at four now?
Four right now, yeah.
Yeah, so.
All right, further responsibilities of the Chief Executive Official is to ensure the public health, safety, and welfare of your community, maintain public confidence, manage expectations, participate in Emergency Operations Center efforts by making decisions and authorizing funds and contracts. So one of the things that we are doing to try to work through all of that is to redraft the county's emergency operations plan. In doing so, that'll then direct the efforts of the Emergency Operations Center, so if you haven't been involved in disaster exercises utilizing the EOC in the past, good chance that several of the people in the center portion of the table are going to definitely be doing so in the near future. A little foreshadowing for you. Powers of the Chief Executive Official, you can declare a local state of emergency, you can issue travel restrictions on local and county roads, you can appropriate and expend funds, can provide for health and safety, direct and coordinate local multi-agency response, and you can appoint disaster workers. So if you have people in maybe a clerical role, and right now you need them to go fill sandbags, you've got the ability within Michigan law to do that. During disasters, an effective leader will ask about these things: security and safety, sheltering, services such as fire and police, systems, or infrastructure, utility infrastructure, schools, access and functional needs. These look very similar to those objectives that we had during the response and recovery effort, because we knew that that is the mission of government during that type of crisis. All right, oversees the day-to-day operations and preparedness for a disaster, again, that's why we have a planner, that's why we're focusing on training and exercising and making sure that we are getting to as many places within the county. I mentioned the LPGA. We are also working very heavily with Ada Township, because they have a lot of special events that occur all within that same, you know, city block or two, and so best bang for the buck, we're investing in Ada Township to get them set up, and then that process is going to be cut and paced to other communities, most recently Sparta for the, was it Town and Country Days? Yeah, and so they've got some other events that are coming up as well, so we're working with Sparta, other places as well. All right. So for a local state of emergency, it provides notification to other agencies of an incident, so it's communicating. It indicates plans and protocols have been put into action, so it's a threshold. It's an initial declaration, it's good for seven days, that can be made by the board chair himself without board involvement. If it needs to go beyond that time, that's when we reconvene the board, and many of you will remember, we did just that for the tornado. We brought you all together for a special meeting just to extend the local state of emergency. Extensions require full board, and then a separate request is needed to ask for a governor's declaration. So, legal drafted us two things when the board chair made the initial declaration. One was for that declaration to occur, the second was a request to the governor to seek a state declaration based on what we thought the needs were going to be at that time. From here, very long-winded Matt is going to step aside and let Lieutenant Thicker take over from the state perspective.
Thanks, Matt, appreciate it. Thanks, everyone, for the invitation and the opportunity to be able to come and talk about emergency management with all of you. Just to let everyone know, we're winding this down, only have a few more minutes, so hang in there with us. I appreciate your attention to this important topic. I'm going to talk about, again, from the state, what state's assistance looks like and what federal assistance looks like, and then again, we're going to wrap up with a little bit of legal stuff, and then we're going to be done here very shortly. So, from a state perspective, like Matt just said, basically, what happens is, in the local, when the, when an incident happens and your resources are used up at the local level, then the board chair is able to request assistance from the state. So that request, again, like I just mentioned, comes through the board chair. It then is routed through me, up through our division, so in emergency management for the state, that is all coordinated by Emergency Management Homeland Security Division within the state police. So that request for a governor's declaration will come up to our division, we will review it, and then we will submit a recommendation to the governor's office. I want to be very clear that the Emergency Management Division within the state police, we do not make decisions on governor declarations at all. That is the governor's job to do. on governor declarations at all. That is the governor's job to do. We just provide, uh, basically, that subject matter expert opinion and the information that is coming from the ground, which is a district coordinator, somebody like myself. Um, at that point, uh, then the governor will take a look at that recommendation and they will make the decision. Sometimes they will agree with the recommendation and other times they will go, um, on their own and make those decisions. So just because a recommendation is given doesn't necessarily mean that, that, that the governor will actually follow that recommendation. Similar to what the board chair has as far as authority goes under a local declaration, a governor's going to have, um, similar authorities. Uh, you can see kind of the list here of different things that they are able to, um, to do. Uh, the suspended statutes, basically, that's just dealing with regulatory-type stuff. So, for example, uh, in a cold snap, uh, back in 2019, um, where there was that cold snap happening, uh, under that declaration, the governor's declaration, they were able to suspend the regulatory requirements for truck drivers and things like that, that were only allowed to operate a truck for eight hours a day. Because of the need for propane deliveries and things like that up in the colder parts of the state, uh, they were able to suspend that, uh, regulation. So that's the type of, uh, statute suspension that we're talking about. It's not, uh, like your criminal acts or different things like that. Um, again, the governor can redistribute , uh, resources, state resources, uh, throughout the state wherever it's necessary, um, can direct and compel evacuations. Um, but as you can imagine, uh, with that comes some political fallout that many governors are not willing to take. And so, uh, to my knowledge, uh, that's never happened. Uh, but that authority does lie within the Public Act 390. Uh, they are also, uh, able, the governor is the one that is going to request any sort of federal assistance. So speaking of federal assistance, again, that request comes from the governor's office. It, the federal entity that oversees all responses to emergencies is FEMA or the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Um, and then that information or that request will run from the governor to FEMA and then FEMA, just a lot like, uh, state police emergency management. They will make a recommendation to the president and then the president is the one that's going to make, uh, the decision as to whether federal assistance is going to be made available. I talked about it just a second ago, but this is what, uh, emergency management structure, uh, looks like. Obviously, the governor, uh, is going to have ultimate authority. And then it rolls down from there to the state Director of Emergency Management, which is, uh, the Colonel of the state police. And then, again, he delegates down to the captain of Emergency Management Homeland Security Division, uh, with, um, who is the Assistant Director for Emergency Management. All state departments and agencies are going to have an emergency management coordinator, uh, that basically, again, state police emergency management will coordinate all those resources. Again, under, uh, division is emergency management district coordinators. There are eight around the state. And again, Matt already kind of explained to you what my role is. I have seven other counterparts throughout the state. And then from there, uh, again, we coordinate, we work very closely with local emergency managers, uh, which is at that local level. Um, so a lot of counties are not as large as Kent County. So really, it is just the, uh, county emergency management program that we coordinate with. Here in Kent County, with all of the other political subdivisions that are relatively large themselves, they are either going to have their own programs or, uh, what Matt already referred to as a support program. And of course, you can see all of our, uh, public and private partnerships, uh, that are out there as well. But this is just looks, this kind of shows you what that, uh, structure looks like. All right. Real quick, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to roll through, uh, some of the information I've already talked about, but kind of from beginning to end. And hopefully, this kind of, uh, shows, kind of gives you that picture of what it would look like. So you have a disaster that happens. The incident in August, it took place. Uh, local resources responded. It was more than what they could, uh, handle. And so in addition to those resources being overwhelmed, as Matt talked about earlier, there was that initial damage assessment that was conducted. That gives kind of that picture of what was going on and how bad the damage is. That, uh, from there, a local declaration is declared. And again, Matt, um, hit on it earlier. Basically, that's just saying, listen, hey, something has happened. We have emergency plans that we have put into place and we are acting, we are taking care of this. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, officials that maybe get a little bit concerned about declaring local emergencies. And really, uh, there's a lot of times where you can declare a local emergency and you may never need state assistance. But then, in those instances where you do need state assistance, then that declaration is already in place. So that declaration is made. Then, once the declaration is made and there's a determination that state assistance is needed, then again, like Matt already described, that is a separate request that, again, comes through the board chair. Yes, sir?
That's right. The Chief Executive Official, that's Stan?
Correct.
Okay, so Stan's a really talented, smart man, but who's giving him the information to where we're at in this process? How bad it is for him? Okay, so you're reporting Stan?
Facebook.
Okay. Yeah, Facebook. So you're reporting the Stan?
Yeah, so that's where that information flow starts from. Really, it starts from the ground level, moves up through Matt, up through, um, the county administrator to, uh, the board chair. And that's kind of here in Kent County, how that information flow goes.
Okay, he makes a unilateral decision on his part. He doesn't have to bring us into it?
That's correct. That's on the initial damage assessment.
Right, okay.
Uh, or, excuse me, the initial local declaration. He, the, the, uh, Public Act gives the authority to the chair for that declaration. And it lasts for seven days. Anything longer than seven days, that's where the rest of the board is required to come in and weigh in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So then, once that request for a governor's declaration comes in, then again, that information or that request comes, funnels up through me, up to our division. Our division will look at all the circumstances, all the information that they have at the time of the request, and then they will provide that recommendation up to the governor's office. The governor then declares the, uh, the governor's or a state of emergency. And from that point, usually what ends up happening is, this is usually in, not hard and fast, but usually within the first week or so of an incident. By that point in time, it, we have a pretty good picture in place as far as, uh, what is needed or things of that nature. Now, again, when I say that typically happens, of course, in the August storm, the August storm was not typical. I know the, uh, federal declaration came quite a bit later, and there's a lot of things that go into that. Uh, but under a typical process, that, within the first week or two or something like that, there's a pretty good idea of what that damage is and what the needs are. At that point in time, our division will request FEMA to come in with their federal resources to conduct what's called a joint preliminary damage assessment. Basically, what that is, is we'll go around what has already been conducted by Matt and his office, that initial damage assessment. We'll go around and we'll look at those same, uh, structures and we'll, we'll make that determination as far as what the level of destruction is. Once that preliminary damage assessment is conducted, all that information is put together and that is given up to the governor's office. At that point, the governor then can determine, do we need additional federal assistance? Now, with that said, there's two different programs, and Matt kind of pointed it out earlier, but at the federal level, there is public assistance and there's individual assistance. Individual assistance is the declaration that we were awarded back in August. That's for our individual residents, all right? What, the requirements for that are a little bit gray, if you will. Um, and so there, you, it's kind of, it's very subjective, I guess is the easiest way to put it. As far as the requirements for public assistance, it's actually, uh, very black and white. There's a requirement that statewide, there has to be a certain dollar amount of damage. And if there's not that amount of, uh, damage to public infrastructure, you don't get the, the declaration. So there's two different programs. One is very subjective. One is very, are pretty much objective and has a very strict dollar amount that is required. Um, so I just want to point that out, uh, to everyone. Uh, once those, the request for a federal declaration is made, again, that goes up to FEMA and then FEMA then will make their recommendation up to the president. And ultimately, it's the president that makes the decision as far as a federal declaration. Again, uh, just a few things that I just got done, uh, talking about. Uh, local, uh, resources are needed to be, uh, exhausted before the next level is requested up. Again, I, I just kind of briefly mentioned it, but just understand, what I talked about is kind of a quote-unquote typical scenario, but quite frankly, there are very few typical scenarios. Uh, each declaration has its own twists and turns, if you will. And so not all the time is it very always straightforward. So just keep that in mind. Um, again, I already talked about it. The request for federal resources always comes through the governor's office.
All right. So as you can probably see, and by the way, we've got like two slides left. You guys are all saints. Thank you for sticking around for this. All right. So PA 390, 1976, it provides the framework for how emergency management and homeland security operates within the state of Michigan, defines responsibilities for local and state government, also gives the right authorities to the right places. In this case, uh, at the state level, the governor certainly has certain powers, uh, that really nobody else in the state has. It addresses liability and, um, addresses how requests for state and federal assistance occur. Uh, I can tell you, corporate counsel is always involved anytime we are inching closer to thinking that we're going to need to declare. And they are scouring, uh, the Emergency Management Act to make sure, uh, that you all are protected in the way in which that they do so. Uh, and so they're very much a part of, uh, what it is that we do, uh, especially when a declaration comes up. So, uh, legal action common, um, it's unavoidable, right? Where it's 2024, um, there's probably going to be litigation on something that somebody did at some point for something. And a lot of times when a crisis is, um, involved, it's like, uh, pouring gasoline all over the situation. So definitely, uh, litigation can happen there. Um, but one of the things that PA 390 provides, uh, other laws do as well, but it's protections to individuals and governmental entities. So that is looked at very carefully as we process through how it is, right? More of a method question and how it is that we're going to respond and recover. Uh, one example of this is that, uh, your volunteers that work, uh, through the emergency management program, uh, we are working through legal and other places like HR to make sure that they have the appropriate level of, uh, you know, insurance protection, workers' compensation type and protection, based on how that Michigan Emergency Management Act is written. You're on the hook to provide it to them. So we're taking, uh, you know, the, the letter of the law down right to that, uh, detail and making sure that that is actually operationalized on the backside. Go ahead.
Civilian volunteers, they don't need their own personal coverage. They're, they're under some of the federal policies of yours. And how do you let them see what their expertise levels are? Are they really, you know, volunteers, which is great that they're capable of doing what they need to do? It seems like that would be great.
So we do a very similar background, uh, that what we do for pre-employment at the sheriff's office. It's one of, again, one of the benefits of, uh, working through the law enforcement agency, um, is being kind of well-versed in how that background process should operate. So we actually utilize the background investigators, uh, that we would utilize for any other employee of the sheriff's office. Um, but specific to the Emergency Management Act, uh, there just is that additional, like, workers' compensation type, um, coverage that is required. So we wanted to highlight that, highlight that for you, make sure that you understood that if you see anything or hear anything about that, we did go through the process and making sure that that's taken care of. And it's intensive. It takes, you know, getting names, date of birth and everything on all of those volunteers. Volunteer organizations turn over rapidly, so we're always resubmitting that information as well. So with that, I think we're done.
So I have a couple of questions, Matt. So, um, my recollection is that I've been engaged in signing the Declaration of Emergency on a number of occasions. As I recall, it was, I think the polar vortex was one of them. Um, certainly, this was one. I recall there, there's a, a heat experience. Um, and I think that we thought at one point there is going to be a major snowstorm, but, but they're all natural disasters. The, the same rules would apply, though, if it's not a natural disaster, but a, a human-related disaster.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if, if I concluded that our unemployment rate is too high and that's just created a disaster, in theory, I could, I'm sure that the sergeant would blow that one off in a hurry. But, but at least that's, or is there a statutory definition of what I would have to determine is a disaster?
So the, the act and, you know, counsel, feel free to step in here, but the act does outline, uh, some of the stipulations required for that. So, you know, it deals a lot with life and safety hazards, uh, do exist. You have to attest to that when you actually do your declaration. Um, so there is some mechanism legally, uh, to prevent a, a gross overexaggeration.
An overreach, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And the other question I had is, um, it, once I submit the declaration, um, by the way, I know that I'm only two steps away from the president, but, um, is there an appeal process available? So I, I made the declaration, the governor, you guys aren't persuaded by it. Do I have, uh, a recourse at that point?
So, so the state was actually denied, you know, one of those things that we talked about was the, uh, the public. So the FEMA public assistance side was actually denied to the state of Michigan. In some cases, there has been an appeal that's made. You want to talk at all about the appeal here?
So, yeah, so at the federal level, there is, like, we can submit, um, a request for the declaration. And then if it's denied, there is an appeal. But typically, on appeals, you have to have more information than what you originally had in order to make that appeal. As far as for a governor's declaration, um, I am not aware of any quote-unquote appeal process that is in play. Again, if there is additional information, um, that is available that could be presented, that would indicate that there, um, emergency or a disaster has taken place, then, of course, that additional information can be provided. And then, you know, that would be presented up to the governor's office for, for their consideration. Uh, but there, in other words, you can't just say, I didn't like that decision. I'm appealing it. There's really no other place to appeal it.
So it's more of a, we have more information, we're going to recycle this declaration, take another look at it because we've added this?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, go ahead, Billy.
Thank you, guys, for being here for the presentation.
Um, I can appreciate, um, what the county's doing. Oh, by the way, we got this news. It says, National Association of Counties. And right on the headline says, "Counties Grapple With Aftermath of Deadly Tornadoes." So it's headline news for the National Association of Counties. But anyways, um, I just thought that was interesting that you guys are here and we get this today. Um, it sounds like, as far as commissioners are concerned, when a disaster occurs, we aren't necessarily immediately involved. I mean, we should be aware that, you know, the, say, tornado occurred. And it sounds like there's some window where we may need to be called in. It's a seven-day declaration. And the question is, does that happen on day seven? Or in anticipation that it's going to go beyond day seven, the chair is going to call a meeting on day five? And we should be, like, making ourselves aware and available that we're going to be calling to an emergency meeting. And how is, how does the, um, what do you call it, Open Meetings Act, is that somehow over, over, do you have to display that meeting 24 hours in advance?
I think it's 18, 18 hours before.
18?
Yeah. So there were a couple of parts to that. Uh, no disrespect, but I'm going to disagree with you on the first part. Um, I'm looking for information wherever it comes from, in the minutes and hours and days that follow one of these things. And you are probably more connected to your constituents than I am. Uh, and so if you are developing lists of- And so if you are developing lists of problems that are existing based on whatever it was that we, you know, just experienced or endured, I would hope that you would route that through the appropriate channels here so that it makes it over to us and that we can add that to the list. I know Commissioner Wooden had done that with a couple of issues that he had within his area, more in the recovery side of things. Because again, these, you know, the response is the night of. That's four hours and police and fire do their thing and it's kind of, you know, slam dunk. They go back and wash the fire trucks and put them back into service. The rest of the work still has to be done and that's trying to figure out how we're going to handle this mess, how we're going to put these pieces back together, how we're going to, you know, recover. And that can sometimes be where more of that commissioner as a conduit, you know, exists. So I would say, i- if you're getting that type of information, don't make the assumption that we've got it already. Route it through the appropriate channels. I wouldn't necessarily advocate for you to go out and seek that information because we do have plans in place within the county for how information of an emergency nature is supposed to be reported. They should be dialing 911 or calling public safety. But if you happen to get it, please pass it up and it'll eventually make it over to us so that we can go through it. And I'm sorry, after that long-winded response, I don't remember the other part of the question.
Well, so your response was, if that happened in my district? But I guess my question was, if it, and in this case, it didn't happen in my district.
Yep.
So I'm like, well, that's over there. And do I need to somehow make myself available immediately? Or is this just wait and see, you know? Obviously, if it did happen in my district, I'd be more involved in, in communicating with the constituents where problems might be that I could relate. And I forgot what the set of parts.
I think Commissioner, what, what I recall doing is when we got to the point where we thought we need to reconvene, we sent out notice to commissioners that, look, we are at a point where we may need to do an emergency meeting in order to extend this, this state of emergency.
Yeah, so, you know, I just, I guess I just want to prepare myself mentally because evidently I missed the communication. I didn't make that meeting and I'm concerned that, you know, why, why didn't I, why wasn't I noticed, notified about that meeting? You know, now I, now I know that I should be aware that that's a potential and that I should be monitoring my email during that time period to make sure if there's a meeting called that, you know, I'm being called to come here to, you know, make a decision on emergency funding or whatever it might be associated with that disaster. And, yeah, and I was like, will that happen on day seven or are we having that meeting on day five anticipating it's going to go past day seven?
I'll answer part of that. I'm going to be careful not to give a commissioner direct guidance that probably should come from him, so I'll let him take care of that part. But in terms of when to expect that, it's hopefully going to be well in advance of that seven days. A seven-day time period is the very, you know, far outreach. We're going to know within a day or two if we need a longer declaration than what we have. So I would say within the three to five-day timeframe is when that hopefully will be scheduled. Now, if we're, you know, working around a holiday or a weekend or something along those lines, we may have to deal with that or we may have to have a Saturday meeting.
Yeah, and then it's one more thing. I appreciate that you're proactive in working with townships in advance of these disasters to have a plan in place and that you've exercised that plan with them so that in the, you know, event that there is an emergency, they know what to do and you guys are, you know, communicating. I know when I was on a township board of trustees in 2008, our community was hit by a tornado and nobody knew what to do. Supervisor didn't show up and, I mean, it was like, well, you know, this isn't right. We should have, you know, the, obviously, the first responders were there, but I mean, there should be some sense of the governmental responsibility to the, to the disaster and that there's a plan in place. And it sounds like you guys, you know, have been proactive in putting that in place and assuring that the citizens, you know, are well, you know, covered on, in such an event.
Yeah, specifically for those communities with 10,000 or more.
Right, and we would qualify. You know, I don't know that in 2008, we had, it was probably 8,500. We were on a threshold. We're definitely in Calhoun Township now over, you know, like 16,000.
Calhoun is one of our local support plan towns.
Great, good to know.
How'd we do? This was a smaller event, but it was widespread, but thankfully, not a lot of injuries. Did we learn anything as far as where we're at, as far as our preparedness? And is there anything that you found that we were lacking in?
Sure.
That we can improve on? And what type of, what type of scope of an event can we currently handle? Let's say this was three times as bad. Were we in good enough position to handle something a lot worse or where we at, I guess?
I think the most important thing that we took away from it was that it's not what we can do, it's what we as a team can do. And that's one of the critical parts on why Lieutenant Thicker is standing here right now, is to show you all that we have that established relationship to handle those incidents that go beyond our local capacity. I tend to treat incident response a notch or two above where it really is to make sure that our bases are covered, but also a little bit to make sure that we are ready for something larger than what, you know, actually happened. So I take the risk of, you know, losing some credibility sometimes, you know, for, for calling a little bit, you know, too much of action. But I think, you know, the, the consequences on the other side are, are just not acceptable. And the level of information that we get early on in one of these things, I mean, we're, we're still learning about buildings that have been impacted three, four, or five days into this event, even though we had all the tools that I just showed you. So the, you know, with the best tools available, you still have to keep an open mind that you might be missing something in the corner. And so we treat it just a notch above.
Yeah, and I, tornado missed my house by just a couple of miles as a crow flies and, but I was really impressed with the response throughout the whole township. But I didn't hear hardly any complaints, just concerns. But I think that was a smaller event, but I, I didn't hear anything negative at all. And I guess my biggest concern is always is, okay, what happens if the electricity goes down for the sirens or what type of, you know, redundancy do we have with those sirens?
Yeah, so on the siren side, there's a lot of discussion on sirens. Some communities, even within Michigan, have made the decision to step away from them. In fact, the Gaylord area was one of those. They had made that decision before the tornado had gone through and so sirens weren't part of their toolkit on that day. We still believe that there's enough value in them. We, we are continuing to make sure that all the local units know about any instances where the tornado is, or tornado siren or the outdoor warning sirens as it really is. If we find out that there was some type of problem where it did not activate when it should have, a lot of times those phone calls come to us and we reach out and make sure that they're taking action to, to get that replaced. What I would love to see is some type of standard system that we can use that really brings the, the process of alerting and, and, you know, we saw that it took about three minutes for us to get that button to actually activate the sirens on top of the delays that are already built in, throughout the weather service needs to do to make sure that they've got that confirmation on their radar for that second radar swipe. So there's a lot of time that we're losing and we just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to be as accurate as possible and as timely as possible. The accuracy, in my opinion, we shouldn't be lighting off all the sirens in the county. It's 2024, there's systems in place now. They're expensive, I'm not going to lie, it, this costs money. You know, that'll, that'll mimic that box that you see for the tornado warning. Only the sirens within that box, in my opinion, should be the ones that are sounding. It should mimic what's going on with your cell phones. If you're in the box, your cell phone's making that noise and you're seeing the instruction that's being given, but it's confusing when we've got sirens that are going off that are outside of that box.
Exactly, and, and you know, if you watch newscasts around the country whenever, the only negative I ever hear is, I didn't hear sirens that go off. So we still count on the sirens, even in this digital age of information and stuff. You know, you're not always glued to your phone and paying attention, so you need something audibly alert you. So, I mean, I would say we got to make sure that at minimum, we have the power capacity to, to operate those sirens, even if the power goes out.
They do have batteries on them, but sometimes the duration of a power outage, you know, potentially could exceed how long those batteries, like a car battery.
But the initial blast would be there to.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No, I, I followed up on that. I think one of the risks of, of the countywide siren is these sort of, you know, it's the Chicken Little thing. And the siren doesn't mean anything after a while because it'll go off in a sunny day. And if we can be localized on it, it, it's probably more impactful.
We call it normalcy bias. It is definitely, you know, it's, it's very, my degree is actually in psychology and it's very interesting to me throughout the entire course of my career here, how often I've been able to utilize it because it's really, you know, what is going to motivate people on my current role? That's probably the most important thing I do is to try to predict how it is that people are going to respond to my instructions, especially post-pandemic when we all know that the sensitivities that exist out there. And so I have to be super careful about how it is that we're trying to get people to do the things for their own safety.
Scope of this particular disaster was very limited. It looked like the tornado damage area was maybe 100 feet wide wherever it went. And so you see on TV these tornadoes, you know, F4 tornadoes that are 900 yards wide and have gone for 20 or 30 miles, just mowing down a path of destruction. Fortunately, that didn't happen. You had mentioned that our commissioner, Ben Green, had gotten involved. Exactly what did he do? And what similarly can, can I as a commissioner do if there's a disaster? I mean, what happened in that regard?
So there was, I think, a lot of his constituents that were reaching out to him and urging that, you know, something needed to, the government needed to swoop in and do something. And unfortunately, a lot of the things that they were requesting were really not something that government does. It's one of the reasons that we recognized early on that volunteers were going to be needed because again, that was outside of a, you know, a publicly funded way of handling these situations is to go onto private property and do a bunch of improvement, you know, however you want to, to, you know, to stumble your way or navigate through that discussion. But basically stated, it was not something that government does. We knew that the volunteer groups were going to be needed. That's actually one of the reasons we requested the state's assistance is because we didn't have enough of those, you know, essentially chainsaw volunteer groups that could go out there and buzz those trees up.
And then you made a comment about the radar. And you said that the image for evaluating when you turn those sirens on, it takes like a minute and a half of a revolution of that radar scope. To, that's, those are critical minutes. If you had to wait three minutes, by that time, the tornado would have been down and destroyed and gone. I mean, how do we improve that?
Probably not my question to answer. All I can tell you is that I've had a lot of conversations with the weather service, you know, in other parts of the country. Some of the more tornado-prone areas, the, the concentration of radars is a little bit closer together, but really not much. This is something that you really see in almost every part of the country is that it just, it does take a fair amount of time for that energy-producing radar to go out, get the return back, analyze and get to a decision. So, you know, it, it does speak to the need for people to recognize the value of tornado watches when we're able to get that advanced warning where those conditions are favorable. For whatever the reason, in this particular case, some of that wasn't available that night. But yeah, I mean, so it is something that we addressed and, and basically, it's, it's not much different here than other parts of the country.
All right. If any other questions? If not, thank you so much for being here. Thank you.